All right, let me call this meeting to order.
That's good.
This is our May 6th, 2019 meeting, City of Hartwell. I'll lead us in a prayer. Heavenly Father, we thank you for today and thank you for the beautiful sunshine and great community we live in and just thank you for my colleagues here on the council and all the hard work that's been put in for our community. Thank you for the results of all that hard work and flourishing town we have here. And we just thank you, just pray that tonight we'll have your wisdom as we make decisions for the people of our community. We pray for all these things in Jesus's name. Amen. Please stand for the place to play.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
All right. I need to, I'm gonna go ahead and. Mayor's comments, you know, we have our May 25th Cars and Guitars will be in downtown. Real excited about that. Lake Hartwell Music Festival, same day on that Saturday. So, big event coming up, please know that that's there.
Quanis Bike Ride.
Yeah, Quanis Bike Ride, all that good stuff. Big, busy weekend, so we do thank everybody who puts that on when we know that'll happen between now and our next meeting. So, we wanted to just kinda say thank you for that. Kind of our big kickoff, I guess you would say. Approval of the minutes for last meeting, that was April 1st, council, do y'all know of anything? Motion by Councilman Haney, a second by Councilman Craft to approve the April 1st regular meeting minutes. Any public comment or question? All in favor, raise your right hand. Any opposed? Okay, gotta make a little amendment to the agenda. Just a second, I'm gonna call Mr. Mark Wildes, who's here to talk to us about Arbor Day and some things with the city. I'd like to go ahead and add that right here. We'll go ahead and get him in and then let him get on the road. And then we also need to take off on item 5, the June 8th street closure request, I believe. So, the item number 5 will just be the DDA report, okay? Council, anything else that you, can I get a motion to amend that agenda?
Sure.
A motion by Councilman Craft, a second by Councilman Griggs. Any comment or questions? All in favor, raise your right hand. Okay. Mr. Wildes, floor is yours.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm Mark Wildes with the Georgia Forestry Commission, and I'm just coming out today to award you guys with 24 years being in Tree City. As soon as y'all all know, you take part in the Tree City program, one of the few cities in the state that have made it 24 years. Inside here, there's a flag and there's also a golden leaf. I typically give this to y'all when we have tree planting ceremony on Arbor Day, but we didn't do that this year. I think the plan is maybe we'll do it in October. There are some grant funds that are available for tree planting projects, and I understand you guys have a project on Depot Street that you're gonna be working on.
Yeah, that'd be great.
So, you know, just give me a call, let me know, and I'll be glad to talk to you about the grant program that's available of $2,500 for trees and materials to support those trees when you guys get ready to plant.
Fantastic. Appreciate it very much, thanks for what you do.
24 years in Tree City, congratulations.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Thanks for everything you do.
Let me say something about the Georgia Forestry Service. I had a 60-acre tree farm out in Gold Mine for a number of years, and every second year or so, you had something down at the experiment station and grifting and go down there and how you can make water go uphill. Herman Town was sitting there every time you went down there. He was defrocked by them, but he was still talking to somebody. But they would come out and they'd burn it off and they were doing that, and I was in town, I went out there, you know, fire from 10 miles away, it seemed like, and one of the guys came around and said, "I gotta quit doing this." When he lit it, it was, there was a flock of turkeys in the tree above, and they came down on top of him, said scared the dick.
We have a field day coming up next Thursday on the 16th on Governor Brian Kemp's property in Madison County. So, if you guys are interested in attending that, we'd love to have you.
Thanks for all you do for us.
Where is it in Madison County?
It's on River Road, just across the river from Elbert County on Georgia Highway 72, River Road to the right.
Yeah, I know where it is.
It's got about 400 acres in there, and the tree farming program is gonna have a field day there on his property, so.
But it's in Madison County, not Elbert County?
Madison County, yeah.
Yes. All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Have a good evening. Appreciate you coming.
Thanks, Mark. Thanks for your service.
All right. Item number 5 is Mr. Jason Ford is gonna give us a DDA report. A lot going on, so we're glad he's here to tell us.
Well, thank you for the opportunity to come up and talk to everyone. One thing I wanna do at the beginning is just recognize our volunteers. We wouldn't really have an organization without those volunteers. They're out today hanging signs, you can catch them at every event, planning and giving advice. So, they are really the home run hitters for what we have going on from a DDA and specifically a Main Street program. I'm also thankful to our sponsors and our partners, again, we wouldn't be able to get much done without those. We've got a slim budget, so everything that they contribute really makes our organization successful. It's almost been a year since I've been in, I'm not quite in the role a year yet, and I've had some opportunity to go to some great training. John recommended some training through Georgia Certified Economic Development Program, UGA, and it's fascinating. It's really great training, I'm learning a lot. It's probably the most comprehensive training I've had as a part of this. Once a month or so, I go to a day-long session either in Athens or, I think this week, I go to Tifton for the next part of it, and you know, you kinda come out of that as a certified economic developer. There's a capstone project you have to do at the conclusion of that, and it's a little bit pricey, but I think it's worth it. I think it can bring a lot of value to the city for, you know, all that we do and trying to take care of our businesses that are in place and improve new businesses. And then I'll go in from, you know, each committee. So, we are in Main Street City, and that's really where my role comes out of, is out of the Main Street program. So, that's four components to that. There's the organization itself, the design aspect, which is historic preservation, is kinda rolled up into that particular committee, our promotions, which is just the events that kinda go on throughout the city, economic vitality is the final one. From an organization, you know, we've gotten nearly $4,000 in sponsorship to parks. Matter of fact, I think just now we've just, we've gone just over. And I've been asked to join the Archway Executive Committee so I can report to them about the efficacy of all the programs they have going on in our downtown and kinda give some advice, and that's been real good. I've been to my first meeting with them. We did receive a re-accreditation as a Main Street program, both at the national and state level, for 2019. So, that's everything that we have going on from an organization perspective. In design, I highlighted our flower baskets specifically, those just went up and I've gotten a lot of positive feedback on how those look. It is pricey, matter of fact, it came in right around $4,300. Now, $2,500 of that is for watering. We ended up having to outsource it. Last year, flowers went up and just a perfect storm of a heat wave early on, and we had some gaps and volunteers trying to water it, and those flowers died. So, we said, "Let's see what it's all about, we're trying to outsource that and pay for that service."
Is that something you pay for through your DDA budget?
Yeah.
Fundraising and all that?
It's through the budget itself, yeah. We just, we were able to afford it this year. I don't know that it'll be as sustainable. Of course, it won't be as expensive because we had to buy some liners and some new chains and some things like that. So, there was some added expense besides the now hiring someone to actually do the watering for us. But there's kind of a lot going on in the design committee, of course, our facade grant program continues. We've had a couple of applications for that, we've actually cut the first check. That was for Jim's Grill for the work they did to repaint, and they have more work to do on their facade grant, but they've already done a lot. We are coming up into promotions, like you said, Cars and Guitars is happening soon. I've highlighted in this report Monster Mash and Scarecrow Bash. So, some of that is because we may have to be come up with some alternative sites since the construction on Depot Street, it may or may not affect that. And so, we'll be planning that here soon and trying to come up with some alternatives so that we can still provide that, since it was such a great event, especially last year. That was my first opportunity to be a part of it. As we move into economic vitality, of course, the rural zone, there's lots of folks that are already able to take advantage of that. We've gotten the word out far and long, people are still calling saying, "Hey, what is this? How can I be a part of it?" We were able to partner, matter of fact, with GMRC, and we can't announce who yet because they have it closed, but they were approved for a loan to purchase the building downtown, so you know, we'll make an official announcements once the loan is closed and everything, there's not gonna be any hiccups in the program. We do have the Chandler-Linder property, and we were talking with some of the council a little bit about that. Some people have shown an interest, but that's still available if anybody's interested in it. You know, could it be developed as a green space? That's something we might look at doing ourselves, that was some of the talk, I think, a few years ago about potentially doing something with that. So, that's just part of that placemaking, you know, process that as we start doing our planning for next year, something that we'll be looking at. I've had an opportunity to do a lot of civic engagement through the different, you know, clubs and organizations. You know, I always say that Hartwell's got a great spirit of volunteerism. It's really been awesome to be a part of. Specifically, like Housing Task Force, that's actually coming up tomorrow, I believe. We're gonna be meeting to talk about that, and we're working on through Archway developing a regional tourism roundtable with Hart, Franklin, Stevens County so that we can try to maximize regionalism, which is all of the talk and all of the training that I've been to, is about regionalism itself. I did complete leadership part, and as I go around town, as you know, we hear about parking and then now the Depot Street project as it's getting ready to get underway. So, you know, just lots of opportunity to engage with people and the merchants specifically as I walk about, and those are the two big items that I might hear about. So, with that, I'll take any questions that you might have.
Anything else?
I've got a question. I noticed you were, you're talking about working the pre-4th, used to be called extravaganza. And let me say, my wife stood where you are, except in the old courthouse, and asked for permission to start that years back when the state had a bus coming through, 43 years ago, a crime-stopping bus. Obviously, it didn't take totally, but it, and so, that was the beginning of it, and it was called the pre-4th extravaganza. Unfortunately, we put the banners up, one of them said extravaganza on it. And that was not my fault, because I know not to even try to spell cat, you know, after the K part, I'm lost on that. And so, that was kind of a joke, but what have you helped them do?
Well, so far, and really what we've decided to do is rather than offering up a bunch of competing events, there's so many events that go on in the city and around the city that I feel like we can, you know, promote the downtown merchants without necessarily throwing that. So, what we plan to do for that is, and what we've talked about with the chamber, is we've got a great volunteer corps. So, really, it's time to start talking about that and being a part of that, and just hopefully having our volunteers being able to go out and be a part of setting up, being present during the event, and having the opportunity to talk about all of the merchants and what they might have going on, being present to maybe help with the takedown and cleanup. But that's where I think our role, we can be best suited, is through our volunteers being present to help with wherever they might need us.
Very good. So, I know you've listed several, a lot of this business, a lot of intrigue, a lot of things happening. Looks like we had a couple of businesses prepping to be opened pretty soon.
I think so.
So, thank you for your hard work, it's been a good year.
Yeah, appreciate it, yeah, I think we've got a lot of opportunity, we just gotta grab a hold of it.
Okay. And anything else, council? Thank you. We'll get to parking, I'll call you back up, I'm sure. All right?
Thank you, Jason.
Item number 6 is downtown parking. First reading, folks in the community, remember, we kinda started talking about parking, I guess it was last month, we talked about it for years, but last month in relation to what we were doing down on Depot Street and the parking lot, that kinda got us talking about what are some options, the things we can do. First step was is to, what does our current ordinance say? And Rob dug through there and sent out some things that he saw. Council, you jump in as you would like, there seem to be, I listed it off as four, could be more than that, but four main things. One concern was, is cars parked for sale in the downtown area stands here, and I'm sure he can tell us all about some of his issues he's had, but cars that park downtown with a for-sale sign and it'll say in the same spot for days and days and days at a time, and it's in front of businesses, it just was something that I think we were getting complaints about from the community and the business owners. That will be eliminated in this ordinance, it'll allow Stan to make a phone call and say, "By our ordinance, you cannot have your car sitting here," you know, at this type of situation. So, that was one thing I believe that's here. Another was, it's something that Stan had mentioned, I guess it was back before the first year, had a vehicle sitting down on Depot Street for days at a time with actually no tag on it, I believe, and maybe even a flat tire. And, yeah, and so, it was like, you know, the merchants are, "What are you doing? Why can't you tow it? This, that, and another." And there was some, you know, I guess some question about what we legally could do considering it's a public street. You say, "Well, that makes sense, you should be able to get, move that car out of there." My understanding is, Rob, the language that you've provided would allow that to happen if a vehicle's there, you run a tag, you run a VIN, whatever, you can't make contact, you can tow it, correct? Correct, Rob? After 48 hours, so.
With or without signage?
Well, I was asked that today, I can't find any specific legal report that you put signage up, but I certainly.
You mean like a sheet of paper that says, "I'll be back"?
No, 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 he's talking, he's talking about signs.
Signs, okay.
Because that was the reason we couldn't do it before. We've had the 48-hour law, but we couldn't tow the vehicle before because there was nothing posted stating that a vehicle could not be left at a public parking spot for over 48 hours. So, even what we've got, we still have to have proper signage stating that a vehicle can't be in a public parking spot for 48 hours.
Well, it's like, I don't know why you need a sign per se, I mean, it's like, how many signs do you need? You know?
The issue may be towing, there's a lot of, it's sort of towing, they enacted a bunch of towing laws, I can't remember what state agency was behind it, but it applied only to private trespass towing. But I haven't been able to find a specific requirement that there be a sign with respect to even a minute limitation, but it would seem to me there probably is somewhere, and even if there is not a specific requirement as such, just general notion of due process would suggest you ought to have some kind of notice to be, if you're gonna hold them to certain limit, or especially if you want to tow.
So, I think over this next month, that's one of the things we've got to, before we enact this, whether it be the next month or whenever, that we've really got to know what signage is gonna be required to enforce this. We'll have to draft it.
Huge common sense.
Yeah, but.
If these guys.
Not that common. It's not that common, Mike.
If you can't enforce a law, there's no reason to write a law.
Yeah, exactly. But we do need to be able to get cars off streets that are there for multiple days that are, would be considered abandoned, and there's no way to reach an owner, we need to be able to do that. So, we're trying to move into that direction, I think that's something that's popped up a few times and PD's had some issues. So, the next item, let's talk about 15-minute parking was something that was mentioned, it was put in the paper, and potentially locations for that. Jason, would you just tell us kinda roughly what your input was regarding that, and who's got control of this deal up here?
Jason does.
All right, yeah, show us your, how did you get to these points and what's the theory behind it?
This came, this was several versions of this, and this is by no means the final version, but in thinking about places where there's some in-and-out services, the little pin points around town are either in front of like the dry cleaners, a place where someone might go in and out to pick up a to-go order for lunch, in front of the post office, over in front of the courthouse where you might just be going to pick up a sticker for your tag, things where you can create some turnover, where people can get in and get out and be able to just conduct that quick business as compared to parking, shopping, eating all in one trip type of thing. And so, in talking with several different folks, this version of the map kind of fulfills that in front of places where you might have in-and-out business.
And this kinda came about from complaints, I mean, let's just be honest, complaints from merchants, folks who say, "People are parking in front of my business, they're staying here for too long." It may be somebody who's works at another place parking in front of mine. "All I need is a space for people to be able to get in and get out." You know, our people have trouble, and we're trying to figure out a way to accommodate some of that without going to the big meter issue we had in the past, or even having the gentleman go around and swipe tires and all that, but trying to have some semblance of a flow and a turnover in these places where it makes the most sense.
What started was, went to Delonaga to have lunch with the mayor of Delonaga and noticed that they had 15-minute parking signs. And their downtown is a little different than ours, it's, ours is more widespread, theirs is more condensed, so they have four. And I asked him how it worked out and how they were monitoring it and all these types of things, and he was very excited about it. And that's what started this whole procedure of doing this, and where they're located in Delonaga was in places where people would go in and out.
It's just specific parking spaces, it's not?
Yes, it's only, there's only four, in the whole downtown area of Delonaga, there's only four of them. And they've strategically located those where, in places, in those four places where people go in and out for lunch and drugstores, you know, those types of things, like the dry cleaners, and they're centrally located, so some of their, only having four, maybe three of those types of businesses share one.
Right, and these particular pinpricks are in little parking spaces, they could be moved left or right, but the idea is that, I mean, for example, the alterations, the dry cleaners are right next to each other, they could share one of those, so they don't necessarily need a whole row or a whole block designated.
Let me point out another thing Delonaga's done, if you get off the square, maybe one block, they've got some parking there.
Yes.
That we don't have to speak of.
So, we do have.
They have official parking.
Right, and that's usually about 40 to 50% full, and I believe, you know, over next to Subway and Farmers Insurance, that lot has been said that public can park there. And then I think, you know, the other thing that we've sometimes forgotten about is on fours, there's some, over in front of the playoffs, there's some parallel parking that does go down that, so that Depot Street area could get qualified.
Plus the horrible signs, given it's 10 spaces or.
Right, so, and then of course with the farmer's market being careful not to overlap with that, but there is some parking on the street that does kinda run down fours that Depot is specific to.
Now, you've had conversations with business owners around the square, some of which have indicated they thought it would be beneficial for them and others.
Right, and I've talked to, you know, a sampling of, and with mostly positive review, I think there was one that was a bit of a, "Why do we need that?" type of approach, and maybe there was one that was kind of indifferent about it. But generally, you know, speaking to folks, it was met with a positive review.
I think one of the biggest things for them to understand, the business owners downtown, is everybody's not gonna get one of these. I mean, if you're an insurance company or a real estate company, a doctor's office, a lawyer's office, a clothing store, those aren't 15-minute run-in, run-out businesses.
Yeah, and I would make one suggestion, if we're gonna do it similar to what Jason's posing here, then the wording has gotta be changed here in the designation. Also, I would suggest that we, if we, and I do like this approach better than the general approach of having whole sections of the town, but I would suggest to you that I'd start off with a minimum number of spots, because you can always add them, it's a lot hard to take them away.
Do you want that in the ordinance, Tony?
I'm sorry?
Do you want like a number in the ordinance?
No, no.
No?
I would say it's less than discretion, city manager, police chief.
There is one spot that I would point out, it's a little bit different marker up there, it's like a thumbtack more than the pin, and that was requested by American Legion if a purple heart parking tack, and it being right on the grounds there with the monuments on it.
We had talked about that.
Stan, would you come forward and tell us, because with anything that you do, you gotta be able to enforce it.
Yes.
We've gotta, we think we know how it could be done, Stan's gonna be the man on the ground getting it done. So, where do you see the 15-minute parking, how you do it? What do you think?
I think that the 15-minute parking, first of all, it's got it strategically placed into the businesses or the courthouse, because people are always going in to take care of their taxes or seeing the magistrate judge for different reasons, whether it be eviction notice or a private warrant. You know, we're not gonna go out there and got you at 16 minutes or 20 minutes, you know, but we are gonna make it people aware that you need to adhere to what the sign says, and it's for 15 minutes. If it's repeated patterns, then we'll sign.
How are you gonna monitor?
We'll have to observe it. We get a complaint, we'll have to go observe.
Maybe, but we're not telling them to put them on the ground, locking tires, doing all that kind of stuff.
It would be a complaint from a business owner that says, "Hey, my space has been filled up for 25 minutes, you know, can you come down here and do it?" You know, you'll go down, you'll observe, you'll try to find whoever owns it, please move your vehicle, hey, this is education, it's gonna be key to start with, and then hopefully, once folks start realizing it, some of that problem will go away, maybe.
Yes.
At one time, if you were on jury duty or if you had court, you were told that if you parked around the square, you would receive a citation and possibly your car being towed. Are we still working with the courts on that?
It's my understanding that they strongly encourage parking in the MOK parking lot.
Okay.
And not to be parking around the square.
Now, they would obviously, if they pull up and they're sitting in a 15-minute parking space, that's a blatant violation.
Yes.
Versus different space.
That's something I was told that we can enforce, so I'm confused on how that was gonna be enforceable. And the only way that I understood it was being enforced was because the judge that was presiding over the court that day was making that order.
Yes.
Is that still correct?
I don't know. If the judge orders that, then they have to adhere to it.
Can we, can we check into that?
Yes.
Because that's one of, that's been one of the complaints, is that people that have courts, the people that have jury duty, not just people that are there for those two things, but attorneys and police officers and witnesses are one of the major issues we have. And we have three parking lots right there at the courthouse. We've got the Martin Luther King Parking Lot, we've got the Subway Parking Lot, we've got the county jail, all within a block of the courthouse.
Yes.
So, it's not like they have no place else to park, they're just choosing not to park in the other spots.
Yes.
So, if we can get with the courts on that, that would be nice.
Be great.
Yes, sir. To address Councilman Haney's comment, the 15-minute parking section that's in the code right now, there is a 15-minute parking provision, it does set up a zone, which is basically around the post office. And at the suggestion of, I don't know if it stands, you know, or anyone else, I did provide in this ordinance for an additional expansion of that zone to some other streets that the council is talking about.
To be able to place it.
As well as, no, zones, as well as.
He's got the whole.
The city manager is trying to designate specific spaces.
My point is, is if the council agrees that we don't necessarily want to do full zones, then in my opinion, 34-98, Section 85 would cover the whole thing.
That was the point I wanted to make exactly, you do not want to establish either to preserve the existing zone or to expand that zone to some other areas, but instead want the chief and the city manager to be able to do it on a space-by-space basis. That's exactly correct.
Yeah, that's what.
I think that's what we're saying we want to do.
Yeah, I think that's what we're saying we want to do.
That's what I'm saying.
Yeah, because even at the post office, we could do one spot on one side of the driveway going into the post office and one side on the other side of, and that would cover the post office. The other spots could be used for people that are there for longer terms to go across to go across the street to the courthouse. But two right there, two 15 minute spots in front of that post office, I'm in it every day. That's plenty. You know, that's really more than we've ever had. And that's plenty of spots for people to get in and out of there. There's never more than five or six people in there to start with. So we've got a huge park, two huge parking lots right there beside it as well.
Yeah. It's like Councilman Haney said, I think, you know, start maybe a little more limited, but with the ability to expand and get it started at the consulting of city managers.
It may be a request from a merchant. We didn't put a place there. Y'all can evaluate and determine if it's reasonable. It is to do so.
One of the things I hope we're going to talk about tonight as well is this truck situation. Because that one's very concerning for me. I, I see that all the time. Last Friday, last Friday night, which was two weeks ago that I was downtown, there was a guy, you couldn't, there wasn't enough space between me and Mike.
We're fixing to do it right now. We're fixing to talk about it right now.
Part of this as well.
Are you stealing my thunder, man?
Oh.
No, no, that's correct. All right. So we've talked about for sale. We've talked about the 48 hour limits and do we need to talk about the signage and making sure we've got it legally set up where we can tow after 48 hours for abandoned cars? And then we talk, go ahead.
We're still leaving in effect, two hour parking downtown. I think that's in effect now, isn't it?
It is. It is in effect.
Well, within certain zones at least, that's what the current code. We didn't make any changes to 3499 with the two hour zones. The zones are still the same. Except for me, I carved out where we, you know, Councilman Haney pointed out, we overlap some of the 15 minute zone, two hour zones. And so I carved out the 15 minute zone, but now I can remove that and just say, except for spaces otherwise designated, 15 two hour parking can be observed in these zones. If you want, still preserve the existing two hour zone.
Do we want to do zones or we want to do individual? We're not doing anything with two hours now, but we really wanted to do a whole section?
Well, we do.
We just don't enforce it. Right. Well, we don't enforce it because we want to be signed up.
Probably impossible.
You can't do it if there's no signage.
You about have to go back to a tire swipe man to, yeah, tire marker to get into that. Go ahead. Okay. Then we had the, the
Wait a minute, we're tracing that through.
No, I'm good. I, again, I just, if we're going to do two hour zoning, if we're going to ever do two hour parking, I think we can just leave what we've got alone because it's not in effect at all unless we decide to put up signs.
Yeah.
So unless, until we decide to
I would leave it in the ordinance personally.
Yep.
That way, at some point, we do want to tighten down on it. We're sorry.
All we got to do is put signs up. Our So is there a need to differentiate between residential people that live?
Yeah, that's, that's one thing Patrick brought up was what about people that live there? And I think Jason talked about it. Patrick had a good point. We need to figure out a way to make sure we identify those people. I don't guess we've had much trouble with people that live in town, live in downtown. But as that becomes a little more popular, we might need to determine.
I think we can do a permit, a permit through us. And we can probably identify those people through their water bill. So.
Okay. Okay. We'll, we'll work on that.
I wouldn't forget, God, to be a little more working this, if we want to keep the two hour zones that we currently have, abolish the concept of zones, allow for designation of specific spaces as two hour spaces, or if we're going to expand and what have you.
Okay. We'll flesh it out.
Like it is.
Yes. We'll flesh it out. All right.
Except for we won't make the exception for residents. Correct, yes.
Yes. Okay.
Box parking.
Yes, sir. Box parking, 3499A, section, that's section 3499A, box parking spaces. Now, council, Trace brought it up. If you go through and you're coming through town on both sides of the courthouse, the narrowing effect is pretty bad. And we know that trucks, long, long SUVs hanging out in the roads, accidents almost weekly now. And how do you get those vehicles out of the street? So, you know, people can drive two cars across at all times and not have to worry about swerving and hitting them and all that sort of thing. So originally, you look at it and you say, well, we could possibly go with more of a compact car parking on those main streets, both sides. But as we talked about it and thought about it, that just seems kind of, that's just not very business friendly. There's a lot of people that drive more full size vehicles that would be impacted and we didn't want to be unfriendly. This picture is a small section in downtown Athens. Okay. Downtown Athens, right in front of the college. That's East Broad Street, busy place, lot of traffic, crowding. And Athens went in and boxed in the back of those parking spaces. And what it is, the rule is, if you fit, you stay. If you don't, you've got to move around the corner to where you have regular parking. Okay. Self, pretty well, you can tell if you get out of your car and your hitch is hanging out in the road or you have a ladder hanging out. Or if you have, as you'll see this green car here, the green truck.
Truck is hanging out in the road.
His back corner is out. If Stan, tell me, tell folk, correct Stan, you're driving through town and you see that, that's clear. You can see they're hanging out, it's hanging over. You put the light on, you go in, say, pull up, go around a corner, it's a warning. And then if you, same thing, if you warn that person multiple times, over a period of time, they'll start getting a ticket for it. Okay. We believe what that will do will widen the road through downtown on both sides. I'm talking the post office side, Howland Franklin. It will still be, if you go through town and you look at it now and you imagine that striped line, you'll be able to tell most full size vehicles, even a lot of trucks are able to get in their spaces. Even a lot of large SUVs are able to get in their spaces. Flip, flip, another one for us. All right. This is the other week. We're driving through town and you, and what's our problem? Our problem is the black SUV hanging out and they had four foot in front of them to pull up. Okay. Perfectly fine to fit in that box, but did not pull up far enough. Okay. You can see the boats coming through town. We, we got motorcycles, everything. And you're driving a full size vehicle and you're having to kind of either slow down and stop, swerve, causing issues. Okay. Give me the next page, next one. Here's what Stan sent me the same day. You'll see the Ford truck hanging out, not too bad. I understand that's a motorhome, but he's over the line. Stan, what are you doing in that situation under the current rules? I mean, is there much you can do?
Well, if we can find the driver, we'd ask him to pull up, which he was all the way up to the stop. Or we'd ask him to do it. And we do have
Prior to an accident, you would try to do that, right? I noticed that's a cargo van. The white van there is a cargo van. It fit. It was in the space. So that's pretty interesting.
Question.
Yes, sir.
Let's use our buddy in the big blue truck. He's on the square every day at noon, goes to the post office. He pulls up on the sidewalk so that his, the back of his vehicle is not in the road. Okay. This is an everyday thing at noon.
What's the rule on that?
You can't park on the sidewalk.
That's, that's, okay. We need to let people know that, that, because a lot of courteous people that have
At least they're trying to get out of the road.
He is. That's what I'm saying. He, here's a guy that has been doing this same thing for, hell, I know, 10 years he's been going to the post office. Every day at lunch, he pulls up on the sidewalk, pulls his truck up so that he's not blocking traffic, trying to use his common
So in this scenario They go around the corner and park.
This scenario, that's good side. That's true. So if we enacted the white line and people pull in and they fit, it widens the road. If they hang out, then they are illegally parking. You would have authority to make them move or citations. If they are parking illegally, per our ordinance, and they are hit, what type of situation is that? Is that possibly some at fault regarding it or?
That's up to the insurance.
Okay.
I would think so.
Okay.
Because it's never, sometimes you get in situations where insurance companies go back and forth and maybe a 820 at all, or a 9010. Because in that situation, that vehicle hit a hard car.
Yeah.
I think, Mayor, generally, if there is a law that someone has violated and that violation results in some kind of accident, and the person who was, you know, in the accident is sort of the type of situation that the law is supposed to prevent, that's called negligence per se. And usually that, that means the party violated that law. It would be a lot more
Starting to stand.
That's an open certification.
Yes, sir.
We're only, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Yeah.
Clarify. We're only going to do the box ends on the two main streets on 29. We're not going to do it on the two side streets.
Well, but how about on the New York pizza side?
That's what I'm saying. That's, that's 29.
Okay. Franklin and Howell Street.
Franklin and Howell Street.
Well, I'm going to put, I'm going to tell you what Stan told me. So I, I said, hey, look, what, what do you think about this? Tell me if I'm wrong. I think it'll work. Then you said, I think we need to extend it on out a little bit because you had problems in front of, on down closer to city hall here and on the other side of the roads as well. So there is the ability to kind of move on out.
Right. That's what I'm saying. We're just going to do all of 29. I would think we would do all of 29 both ways.
In that downtown area.
In the downtown area.
People thinking about it before they get to the main business.
So you can see, you know, this is wonderful artwork. You can see this straight line. It's not going to be painted quite this bad, guys.
He's going to argue that that line was crooked.
Yeah, that line was crooked. But you can see, if you go in and you just take it.
It was an earthquake, wasn't it?
Yeah, it was.
Did that, yeah.
So if you see that, you can see the line. I think people could get the hang of it. There might, we need to also evaluate, you know, signage, you know, how do we make that work? That's still another process. We don't know.
We have to.
Well, I tell you what, well, we need to find out what Athens is doing, one. But DOT didn't seem to have a problem with any of this. I'll put it to you that way.
Yeah.
And so this is not something everybody's doing.
I don't see why we would need to put a sign for people to understand the parking sign of the lines. I mean, Rob, do you differ with that?
You would ask your brother today. I was going to find, I like to keep looking to see before I say that I agree.
No, just
I think, yeah, it won't take long for people to understand that's what you say of the line.
Preschool, they teach you to color inside the line.
It's parking side.
Tony, we still have people figuring the one way streets around.
That's true. That is true. My understanding is, consider this a 3D box. It doesn't just on the ground. If you have a ladder sticking out, that's part of it too. Okay. And obviously with any parking situation, anything we're trying to change, it's not going to fix the problem 100%. But, you know, if you deter the negative action by 60, 70%, you've made a huge improvement and at very minimal cost. I mean, it's really just painting the line here. So we feel pretty good about that. We just need to do a little more research, council. Any questions or anything? Anybody have too much problem?
Again, we provide some zones here and I would like some guidance if you want to keep those or do away with them. Just provide that. Again, this would be something that is named, but we don't want to expand it. Because right now, I think, I think two of these do communicate, but it's basically on the north side of Franklin, north and south sides of Franklin, Carolina Forest, but north and south sides of Howell, Carolina Forest, and then just the north side of Howell, about a quarter. So from what I heard you saying, or the council saying earlier, you would like to expand that to include a couple of several blocks along both streets, both sides.
Couldn't we just say areas of 29?
Parking space on US 29.
I understand from the citizens all the way through.
Yeah. I, I don't, I don't, for the 15 minute parking, I don't think we ever want to do zones. For the two hour parking, I think we leave the zones as they are.
He's talking about the box parking.
Oh, you're talking about the box parking for this?
Yeah. But I'm glad you addressed those two issues too, as I said before.
Yeah. My understanding again is that for the two hour parking, we leave it alone. For the 15 minute parking, we make it spots and not zones. And at this stage in the game, I think we're all agreeing that 29 both ways.
Parking space on 29.
Yeah. Could, could be if it's boxed in. If we do it in front of the Methodist church, doesn't matter. Anywhere on that main drag, both ways.
Parallel parking.
We want to have, we want to have zones. All right. Yeah, that's, that is parallel parking. That's what I'm saying.
All of 29 is ceiling to ceiling.
Yeah, it's all box parking. I mean, all parallel parking down front of Baptist and Methodist church. That's not a problem.
Right.
I don't, I don't think we want to do all of 29 through town.
Well, if anybody's parking on the main road
Can't really well do it on Athens.
They got a problem.
I think, yeah, I don't think there's any parking spots on 29.
Talk about just a couple of blocks and just to allow it to, you know, have folks impeding right away or, or flow of traffic.
I do think we all agree that we're not talking about off streets. We're not talking about Forest. We're not talking about Carolina. We're not talking about any of the off streets. Just the main two drags.
Right. And let me be real clear. There's go
That's right.
I, I know that there's probably concern out there about, you know, time limited parking, very select. I'm talking very select. There'll be businesses that won't have any parking, 15 minute parking spaces within a block of them. I mean, there'll be some that'll have them right in front. That's a, that is a business specific reason, not just a wherever we want to put them. So I think it's a good compromise on a lot of ways.
We talked about drugstores, banks, fast, anywhere that they can come in and out of and get lunch to go. If they don't offer to go lunch, you don't get a, just because you have lunch. If you don't have a to go lunch, you're not getting it. So dry cleaners, banks, drugstores and to go lunch, lunch spots.
Lottery.
Post office.
Post office.
You know, that's, that's pretty much the limit, I would think.
Well, now you got, you get a couple for the courthouse to
Right.
Gets tagged.
Right. We've got, we've got
Police guys are going to make the decision anyway.
Yep.
We'll tweak it out and determine what we need to do. And obviously, we're not going to be sticking 15 minute parking spaces in front of a business that doesn't want one. So we're gonna, it's going to be a selective thing. But that's the first reading, council. You know, we fleshed out some things, questions. We'll roll them up to Stan for enforcement, roll them to Rob for legal, and we'll just flesh it out until maybe now in the next meeting and go from there. I think it's just proof for the community, we're trying to, trying to ease some issues that we have.
Stan, do you foresee us having to add an officer or two to this?
I don't think so.
All right.
Well, that's good.
Any comment, questions? Okay. Item number seven is GMA voting delegate. This is for the Savannah conference. We've designated Councilman Hicks in the past. Can't get a motion to do that?
Well, yeah, man.
Voted by Councilman McNabb, second by Councilman Greg, delegate Councilman Hicks to be the GMA voting delegate in Savannah during the June conference. Any public comment? Question? All in favor, raise your right hand. Any opposed? None? One sustaining? David? John? Whoever's there. Right, Trey?
Yeah.
That's what I thought. Item number eight.
David.
I was like, what? Item number eight is wastewater treatment plant affluent plant pump rebuild. John? Share with us.
Mayor, council, we've had one of our main pumps at the sewer plant. It's got some, some issues and needs to be rebuilt. Got some estimates here from Monumental Equipment to rebuild it. This pump is in a really harsh environment. We have a lot of grit and trash that this, this pump has to deal with, which causes it to malfunction. And before you is a proposal to rebuild it?
Just have a question.
Yes.
I don't recall us having, I mean, you say it was just rebuilt in May of last year.
That's correct.
We don't, we hadn't been having all this, this much, having to do this every year. I don't recall.
Well, personally, I, I can't speak for before. But part of the issue, councilman, is that we do not have a grit removal process at our sewer plant. And that is causing the environment for these pumps to operate in to break down, to have a lot of
All the money we've spent at the, well, treatment plant, we, we don't have whatever
What does grit removal cost?
Well, we have a plan in place to put this in. We've applied for a grant for, for the Economic Development Association, or Administration, sorry, to give us some upgrades at the sewer plant. This being the top priority to put one in. So our cost estimates from our engineers, estimates from our engineers estimated to be over a million dollars. However, the grant's for 2.5 million. So it's a project we've been working on for 10 some odd months, probably maybe even a year now. And we're in the final phases of getting all the sort of paperwork in.
Well, I guess I'm still confused, but David, David, you need to answer this. Why are we having so much trouble now as opposed to?
And that's because part of what has happened there at the headworks, everything is worn out. We're not getting any grit removal now.
At the what?
At the headworks, at the inlet where it's coming into it, there was some things for screening. And it's, it's basically, it comes in and it's like sandblasting. Everything there is gone. We need to do sanding, grit removal, and the headworks coming in. Otherwise, the inlet coming in with all the sand particles acts like.
So we're just going to have to do this again next year.
But that's why we have the EDA. That was our top priority. And the EDA grant was for the grit removal at headworks. So that was the number one priority that we had to address this.
So we don't have to come before you to request.
Well, I mean, we have an option to do it, but I was just trying to figure out why.
You know, it is a perpetual type thing that we, we do not like to come before you to, to bring these type of situations up. Unfortunately, it's our operation.
Okay.
And, and we're doing our best to try to.
Well, $20,000 is a lot better than $10,000.
Could I go ahead and go back to the thing because I've got some history here. When we're actually putting in some of the filters at the wastewater plant, is that we had asked at that point in time, because it did cost quite as much as, as we could have received, and we had asked for permission for them to allow us to go ahead and look at doing grit removal component there at headwork. And they would not allow it, under chief of, because they said it changed the scope of what was going to take place there. In the EDA, we've made that a really top priority.
I have a question. What are we paying for pump maintenance? And what is being performed under pump maintenance that a pump only lasts one year? Is that where that correction?
Well, the contract that we have with Monumental requires, they, they go in and test our pumps, you know, regularly. And this particular pump, because it's at the, the headworks of our sewer plant, it is on the front lines receiving all our influence. It is in such a harsh environment because it's not protected by a grit removal system that is subject to, to being rebuilt.
Just eating it up?
So with Purina being in, I mean, is that going to speed this up? Be having to do this again before this year, next year?
It is, it is quite possible because they will be, you know, sending us extra sewer. However, because of Purina, it's allowed us to apply for this grant through Economic Development, which will allow us to get a grit removal system.
And how long will it take? Assuming we get that grant, how long will it take to get this done?
Well, councilman, I am not really prepared to give you an answer on that because it requires a design from our engineers and a bid process. It is.
Do you have any history?
A year.
On that, yes, sir. You're talking about a year to 18 months. Because there, it is, like John said, it's a process. And I like to say something quicker, but it is a process. And we did not have.
It's not like changing a filter on your air conditioner.
We didn't have the funding. So let's face it, when Purina came, because of the jobs and all of what it created, it actually put us in an advantageous position to be able to go out there and obtain this. So we, we're trying to optimize what we have to go ahead and address these issues at the plant.
Is there any benefit of going ahead and purchasing the new pump as opposed to?
No. I would not.
It's going to work. Sounds like maybe we don't have much of a choice. I'll make a motion when we rebuild this pump.
I got a motion by Councilman McNabb to rebuild a fluent pump at the wastewater plant. Price of that pump is to be re, let's see, rebuilt, $13,956.10. I got a second by Councilman Haney. Where's our funding mechanism on this?
We budget for repair and maintenance.
So this will just come out of a budgeted item line and?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Any questions, council?
I have one more quick question. Before we vote on another pump, when, when it comes in front of us, just so that it'll help my memory, could you also provide all the pumps that we have and the dates that they have been replaced? Because.
Replaced or rebuilt.
Rebuild or whatever. Whatever's been going on with them so we can kind of have something in front of it.
The people that serve them, you got to have a list.
We do. We have a, we have a list, like inventory of their records.
Yes. Yeah, if you can just provide us an overview of that before the next one comes up, we'd appreciate that.
I think everyone would be shocked by how many pumps we have.
It's every month. That's a pump.
All right. Any other comments, questions? All in favor, raise your right hand. Any opposed to that one? Okay. Item number nine is budget amendment Oakview Crossing. This is something that we're required to do through that low-interest loan. Regarding Oakview Crossing is when they make a payment to Red, or pay, when the payment's rendered to Redleg, it has to come to the city and then the city passes it on. Due to that, it's best if we put it in the budget to watch it.
This is just a line item adjustment for the budget. It's not any really changes. You have a revenue line for the payment coming into the city and an expense line going out to pay the Redleg.
Basically, that way when we get halted, everything flushes out. We can show records and everything will be fine.
And just, just for, just for informational purposes, I'd like to provide, I know that the process of that Redleg loan being paid back has started. They've already made the first two payments, so in time, everything's going well.
Okay. Can get a motion to, I guess, authorize a budget amendment. Motion by Councilman Haney to approve that budget line item for the Oakview Crossing for accounting purposes. Second by Councilman McNabb. Any questions or concerns? Question? All in favor, raise your right hand. Any opposed? None. Uh, city manager report. Done?
I'll just give a brief update. I've told the council this, but made public know. We have executed a contract with the contractor on the Depot Street project and the start date is May the 20th. They are starting at the Phillips Brothers property, which is on Railroad Street, and then they will work their way up to Depot Street. So the impact on the businesses on Depot Street won't be immediate, but as construction will start, they will notice that the contractor will be, I won't say inching towards them, but working towards them. So, but that's, that's all I wanted to know, just kind of.
Our tentative start dates are somewhere in the neighborhood of Memorial Day, generally.
Right.
Some day, a few days before now. He's got to mobilize and get his crew here and all of his equipment. So.
May the 20th.
May the 20th is.
It's on a Monday. Yep.
Can you forward each of us the tentative time schedule on that?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Anything else? John? All right. Council comments? Anything, Councilman Haney? Excuse me, Hicks? I could only be so blessed.
I should have.
Let's skip all of them. Skip all this. I just want to encourage people with, right now, we've got three establishments opening for entertainment in the next couple of months. Buy locally, eat locally, entertain locally, and take side streets. If you'll do those things, we'll continue to grow and prosper, but traffic's not going to get any easier. More people are going to be coming into town. Over the next six months, we're going to see a big, a big spurt of people coming in. And we're hoping that's not going to go away anytime soon. But those things are the things that the community asks for, so we're asking you to support those things. Don't forget to lick our old music festival and we do have a Tom Petty band coming this year. So.
Cool.
Lisa Collins wanted me to remind everyone to download the Code Red Weather Report app. It's a free download. Citizens can download that onto their phones, register with the username and email, and you'll get not, not only regional weather alerts, but nationwide.
Code Red app.
Code Red.
Or your phone.
It's free.
Councilman McNabb, you have anything?
No.
Councilman? Councilman Craft?
Nothing.
Councilman Griggs?
None.
Can I get a motion to move into executive session for personnel discussion? A motion by Councilman Haney, second by Councilman Craft, moving to executive session for personnel.